Ready? Called a meeting to order. Need a motion to approve the agenda.
I move.
Motion been made and seconded, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Any questions on the purchase order? If not, moving on to the internal budget revisions. Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir. There are two internal budget revision requests for your consideration, both Central Garage. The request, the first request is Department 717 to decrease line 341 Supplies and Materials by $10,000. Current unencumbered fund balance is $13,402.08 with 10.65% spent to date. And increase line 223 Professional Services by $10,000. That account currently has a deficit balance. And then, again, Department 717 Decrease Line 217 Maintenance to Repair Auto by 10,000. That account currently has a balance of $50,658.09 with 55.74% spent to date. And again, put that money, that $10,000, in line 223 Professional Services. One is to correct the deficit balance and the other is to assure future funding availability.
All right. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Davis on the budget revisions? Okay, if not, moving on to change in status. New hire recommendation received from Tim Zia, Community Corrections Director for Ashley Hinton. As peer recovery coach, add an annual salary of $32,475 effective on April 16, 2020. Change in status received from Brian Ross, Engineering Director for Steve Aberay for a certification increase due to the completion of a qualified MS4 LID/Green Infrastructure Inspector. Salary increase from $66,657 to $67,157 effective on March 26, 2020. Change in status received from Brian Ross, Engineering Director for Steve, how you spell that? For, right? For a certification increase due to completing as a ICC/AACE Property Maintenance and Housing Inspector. Salary increase from $55,000 to $55,500 effective February 9, 2020. Anybody have any questions on the change in status? We have some minutes. March 23, 2020, Burke County Council Emergency Meeting. Everyone was present. Any changes or corrections on those? We have another set of minutes for March 24, 2020, Burke County Council Emergency Meeting. Everyone was present, either in person or phone conference. We had a March 26, 2020 Burke County Council Meeting. Everyone was present. Any changes or corrections on the minutes? On a county council calendars, we have, will be in a meeting on Thursday the 16th of next week at 9:30. The following Tuesday, we'll be in session at 9:30 a.m. to lay the levy. On boards and commission calendars, the fire board has been canceled for tonight. Looks like the LAPC's been canceled for Monday, the 13th. 5:00 p.m. Water District is on. 6:00 p.m. Airport Authority is on. 6:00 p.m. Farm and Land Protection is still on. Central Dispatch on 2:00 p.m. on Tuesday, the 14th, has been canceled. Wednesday, the 15th, the Criminal Justice Board has been canceled. 6:00 p.m. Solid Waste Authority is on. Any change on the boards and commissions?
The airport is going to be teleconference.
Okay. All right. I'm sure some of these, we probably, well, at least have some people calling in as well.
Yeah, I haven't heard about the Water District.
All right. We have a cancel check request from the County Clerk's Finance Office. Any questions on that? If not, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I move to accept or approve the consent agenda for February 9, 2020.
The motion's been made to accept. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Board and meeting reports, Mr. Barnhart?
Didn't have any meaning this week. Give it to Elaine.
Ms. Mauk?
The only thing I have is that we're working on the Bellboy project and we're looking for donations to get it moved and taken apart. The county's going to provide storage statue and we're looking for the movement to the park and we're looking for donations for $3,400.
All right. Ms. Mauk, anything else?
No, sir.
All right, Mr. Walker?
Yes, sir. We did have planning commission meeting on Monday, which was done by teleconference.
That will go.
Well, you know, in the beginning, it was a little bit rough around the edges, but it was, it smoothed out as we got into the meeting and everybody was getting used to it. I mean, it's something new, first off.
You have comments on the public hearing?
We did. Some that were already written in and then there were some that were being typed in as we were having. As far as I know, all those questions got answered or will be answered. I think there's a little bit room for some improvement on a couple of things, but all in all, we were able to continue in the business and was well received. Andy, as to that, we both have a same feeling on a couple of things, so I think we'll progress as we've been doing. Gives us a new way to handle something. I think that in the days coming forward, I think we'll have to change our bylaws a little bit, or probably on most boards, you know, for something like this, as far as teleconferencing and maybe Zoom video conferences. I think the, there was no video face to face that we could see. It may be a little bit better to have the video if its capabilities are there, so we can see each other's and react accordingly, you know, without anybody talking over each other.
Vice President Delayer?
I did have a, did have a Development Authority meeting and discussed, actually, the Development Authority is busier than normal. It seems like it spurred on a lot of activity. There's a lot of learning going on, whether it's how to, how to conduct normal business, but also, also a lot of work. Everybody's working from home in the Development Authority, so that allows them to go on webinars and do those as opposed to going. And they said they're actually saving time because they're doing all these Zoom meetings, those type of things. So as opposed to driving everywhere and going, and they're able to do the Zoom meeting and then just right back onto what they're doing. So they're predicting that this could be a way of the future to conduct business more efficiently, that they've had a lot of comments to that, to that fact. So they're still working, doing their 40 hours a week, doing what they need to do. And we've got, we've got a lot of interest in the county still, so it's good.
Good. All right. Naturally, as you all know, I've been in and out of meetings and telephone calls and along with Mr. Davis and Mr. Wine and our lawyers all week long, so. But no boards and commissions to speak of right now in the meetings. We also have a, Carrie Gano, Mayor of Hedgesville, that has filled out paperwork to be on the Development Authority, the required seat from, from the, from Hedgesville. The previous mayor, Rachel Fields, resigned. So Dan, it's your board. Do you want, well, we're not calling anybody in for interviews right now, but.
I don't think, I don't think that's an interview. I don't think there's an interview requirement to that. Norwood, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's a mandatory requirement from the state of West Virginia. And with that, unless Norwood's got an objection to that, I would make a motion to go ahead and prefer for that seat.
That is a required position, required seat. And as the council notes, we have had some, it's been some time since we've been able to get a regular representative from the town of Hedgesville, which is, like I said, is required. So Andy and I and Norwood have discussed that and we are recommending that she be appointed to the Development Authority.
All right, Dan, you're correct. So that was a motion, right?
Yes, I may, I second it, sir.
I know, yeah.
Yes, that is correct.
We have a motion on the floor. We have a second. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries.
Does she have a term?
Mr. Davis? Well, yeah, she'll have a term, I'm sure, just like anybody else. Right?
Yeah, I think that, I think the term, we have, we have staggered those in, probably have to refer back to Tracy, we have staggered those for three-year terms. So wherever she fits in that three-year term would be my suggestion. And I don't have that information in front of me. But where she fits in, the terms are effective 1st of July. They start the 1st of July and end the last day of June, but we have a three-year program set up now. So wherever that goes, continue. But I, I think it's, it's going to, I mean, she'll continue until she's not mayor or she chooses to appoint somebody else.
The current vacancy that she is filling, that seat actually expires June 30 of 2020. And then I'll come to the council in June to have her reappointed to a regular three-year term.
You hear that, Dan?
I do. Yep, that's fine.
All right. Is Eric Cacke coming in for 911 for the proclamation? I didn't think so. So Ms. Mauk, do you have that in front of you? You want to read it or you want one of us to read it?
I don't, nope. Thank you.
All right, well, try to play it through.
I don't have it right in front of me. My printer is not coming.
Yeah, don't beat me up too bad. All right. Proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April 12, 2020 through April 18, 2020. Whereas thousands of dedicated telecommunications daily serve the citizens of the United States and Canada by answering their telephone calls for police, fire, and emergency medical services by dispatching the appropriate assistance as quickly as possible. And whereas the critical functions performed by professional telecommunications also include those related to forestry and conservations, operations, highway safety and maintenance activities, and many other operations performed by federal, state, and local government agencies. And whereas professional telecommunications work to improve the emergency response capabilities of these communications systems through their leadership and participation in training programs and other activities. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Burke County Council does hereby proclaim the week of April 12 through April 18, 2020, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in Burke County, West Virginia, in honor and recognition of our county's telecommunications and the vital contributions they make to the safety and the well-being of our citizens, adopted this ninth day of April, 2020.
Very good.
Need a motion to adopt.
So move.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Davis, let's go ahead and do the permit fee waiver for Parks and Rec.
Yes, sir. In regard to National Telecommunicators Week, as the council knows, this is typically the annual opportunity that this council takes to formally recognize our 911 dispatchers, as well as dispatcher of the year, supervisor of the year, and so on and so forth. Those folks have been selected, but because of changes in the way we are doing things, social distancing and things like that, the formal recognition of the dispatchers will be delayed until another time. In your packet is two matters for your consideration. The first is a request for permit fee waiver. You will find an email dated March 30, 2020, from Steve Catlett, who is the director of the Martinsburg Berkeley County Parks and Recreation Department. As you can see, Mr. Catlett's requesting that the council waive $1,159 in permitting fees, which is associated with the continuance of the conference room area expansion of the W. Randy Smith Recreation Center. If the council will recall, in August, actually, on August 30 of 2018, and I have included the minutes from the meeting as well as the original request, the council did approve the first request from Mr. Catlett to waive the building permit fees for the addition to the W. Randy Smith Recreation Center, at which time it was to include the, what they call the conference area of the expansion. However, due to some, due to the lack of funding, the original project was scaled back. They now have the funding available to continue the expansion and to add the conference room area. They're ready to move forward. So therefore, they have requested, and I am recommending, that the council waive the $1,159 in permitting fees, which is what you've done in the past.
Is this increase the footprint of the building or is it long-term?
I think the meeting rooms is already in term.
Right.
It's just completely finishing off the building.
You are correct, Mr. President.
Okay. Entertainer motion on behalf of the waiving the fee.
So move. Second.
All right. Motion been made and seconded. Any discussion? The discussion on, that I think would be a legitimate discussion to have would be, there's a couple of things, organizations that we have deemed to be waived. The Parks and Rec being one, Boy Scouts being another. I think there might be a couple others. We work on maybe a blanket. If it's these organizations, until notified differently, to just process them and the fee would be waived.
We've actually had the conversation, I think Andy and I've had that conversation. We'll put together a policy to give you some formal, some formal guidance.
And I know in the years recently passed, Andy did keep, give us, the water service, we're not waiving their fee because they, you know, they can't waive our fees or UC right, and they're in it. So Fire Board, Ambulance, they all pay in fees now, because we have to perform the service. All right. Any, okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. You got the risk?
Yes, sir. Since, I guess, the end of calendar year 2019, we have been working not only on our employee benefits renewal, which we have, almost have that completed. We have vision, life insurance, and dental done. We're just about complete with the negotiation, completed negotiations on our health insurance, so we hope to bring that into by the end of April. But along with that, we're also, we also work with West Virginia County's Risk Pool on the renewal of our property casualty insurance. As the council is aware, we are one of the founding members of the Risk Pool and our participation has served us well. Originally, we were with West Virginia BRIM, Bureau of Risk and Insurance Management, and then we were with Brick Street. And then when the Risk Pool was formed, we, as I said, we were one of the founding members of the Risk Pool. In your packet is the renewal for our property casualty insurance, which includes our, of course, our property insurance, boiler and machinery, inland marine, comprehensive general liability, which also includes our law enforcement liability, public officials liability, our auto coverage, crime, excess liability, environmental liability, which is included under our excess liability, cyber risk and workers' comp. As you can see, our total annualized premium for the current fiscal year, and our policy period actually runs July 1st to June 30th. So the annualized premium for the current policy period, current fiscal year, is $929,358. The renewal premium, as quoted by the Risk Pool, is $1,015,021, which is an increase of $85,663 or 9.22%. As you can see, workers' compensation actually is increasing from $319,030 to $422,932, which is an increase of $103,902 or 32.57%. That premium is driven by two things. It's an increase in our payroll. We did increase our payroll effective September 1 of 2019, and adverse claims experience. And the council has had those discussions, not only with me, but also with representatives of the Risk Pool. In the absence of the workers' comp premium, the total of the remaining premiums actually decreased by $18,239 or 2.991%. I think this is exceptionally noteworthy for an organization of our size. You're aware of our claims experience under the fleet, as well as some of the claims that we've incurred under our law enforcement liability. Of course, while consideration of premium is also on our minds, one of the deciding factors with property casualty insurance and one of the things that the Risk Pool brings to the table that we have not necessarily gotten in the past from either West Virginia BRIM or Brick Street is the service. I have said this in the past, and I can't say it enough, the, the claims support, the training, all the ancillary services that's provided by the Risk Pool is exceptional. It's, it's just a matter of picking up, up the phone if we have a question about a workers' comp claim, which we deal with on a daily basis, as well as an auto claim. The Risk Representatives, we have claims representatives that are assigned just to our case, so that we're dealing with the same claims professionals that we've, we've dealt with for years, that's familiar with our operation, they've been on site, they've visited us. So, you know, the, it's hard to place a dollar value on, on the, the service that we get.
The thing about it is, like you said, everything looks pretty good for an organization of our size, when the premium is right around plus or minus a billion dollars. Workers' comp went up 32.57%. So I'm gonna ask you, Mr. Davis, for next week or the week after, to bring us a spreadsheet on, on which department, each department on workers' comp claim, how much, what a percentage of that workforce represents in our payroll, and whether that department offers light-duty services for their personnel when they are workers' comp.
Be happy to do that. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
After reviewing the proposed renewal, and I've discussed it with Steve Rawling, who's the director of the Risk Pool, it's my recommendation to the county council that you approve the renewal of the fiscal year 2021 property casualty insurance at the quoted premium not to exceed $1,015,021. The, as we put together next year's budget, we did build in an increase of about $100,000 for property casualty renewal. So we knew that, we knew what it was going to be. It did come in slightly higher than we expected because we did make some changes to coverage last year that was not annualized, but it's well within budget, within the courthouse budget. And so my request for, or my recommendation to you that you approve it does not include a request for additional funding, because the funding is available.
How come the automobile?
Number of cars.
Yeah.
We continue to reduce our fleet.
And that's why I was getting ready to say, Jim. So our goal of reduce our fleet, keeping our fleet updated, in most cases, has worked out very well. You know? Now, you know, we've got huge payments to make, but at least it's gone as on schedule. But.
And on the flip side, if you will recall, when we put together next year's budget under your capital vehicle count, account 960, one of the things that we have not budgeted in the past is, we've always budgeted for the premium or the payments on our loan. We have not adequately budgeted in the past for vehicles that are damaged beyond repair that we have to replace. So that is not reflected certainly in, in the premium charged by the Risk Pool, but we have had to account for that in our capital vehicle count, which we, which we have.
But I want to make it very clear, we're going to keep some of the old vehicles for those occasions before they become unequipped.
We are.
Anybody have any questions on the Risk Pool? Need a motion to approve the, the renewal at $1,015,021?
So move.
Motion been made.
Second.
Seconded. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone, anyone opposed? The motion carries. The only other item we have is discussion of COVID. We could take a break and come back to this, or I'd say move on.
Yes, sir.
All right, so.
Move on.
All right.
The council met on Monday to pass an order which modified the work schedules of non-essential county employees, as well as category two essential employees. Tuesday morning, we did have to work through several small issues, but since that time, it seems to have been working very, very well, and I think the employees are appreciative of your efforts.
Do you know how many employees?
About 175. So we're working, for example, in the tax office, we have five on this week and five off, and then next week they will, will switch. So it's worked pretty, it's worked pretty well. As Council President Copenhagen mentioned, since that time, there have been a number of, of issues that have come up as it, as it relates to the COVID-19 pandemic. Most of those issues, we have worked through as, as we, as they've been presented to us. Certainly have tried to keep the council apprised of what we're doing, so that if you get calls, you'll know what, what's being done as far as occupancy of some of the big-box stores, the hotel motel restrictions, some campground issues and things like that that we, that we've been working through since Monday. The one issue for your consideration today is an order that provides additional guidance to our 911 center as it relates to emergency dispatch. Andy Blake, who is your deputy legal counsel, has done some research, not only what has transpired since February of 2020, starting with some guidelines that the Department of Health and Human Services, Federal Department of Health and Human Services have put out, but also some discussions that he had yesterday afternoon in regards to what the state, State Police is doing, state, West Virginia State FEMA and some other agencies are doing. So I'll turn it over to Andy and let him talk about the order. So, I'll turn it over to Andy and let him talk about the order.
Good morning. As Mr. Davis elaborated, the order before you orders and directs the Berkeley County Dispatch to amend its protocols to inform first responders within Berkeley County of known and possible COVID-19 cases. Many state and federal agencies over the last month have issued guidance that recommends that 911 centers share this information with first responders. But none of the guidance specifically says how to do so. This order is a result of some conversation yesterday with the West Virginia Division of Homeland Security and a couple of 911 centers across the state. Since 9/11 occurred, 911 dispatch centers have been encouraged to use plain language when they dispatch. As you know, first responders serving Berkeley County have been requesting that Berkeley County Central Dispatch notify responders of confirmed and possible COVID-19 cases for the protection of the public and the first responders. This council has been doing that through its CAD system over the last several days.
Put EMS in every deputy has a CAD.
Yes.
Has a computer on the floorboard.
That's correct. This order, consistent with guidance from federal and state government and the Center for Disease Control and Protection, amends your protocol as follows. And this is in paragraph 6 of your order. Screening questions, which were distributed to 911 centers by the West Virginia Division of Homeland Security, shall be asked after the call-taking procedure has reached the send prompt on pro QA and units have been dispatched. If the caller confirms that an individual at the responding address or incident location is positive for COVID-19, central dispatch will notify the first responders responding to the call in plain language over the radio on the adequate channel that the address is quote "COVID-19 positive." If the caller answers central dispatch's screening questions in the affirmative, but the caller is unaware of the individual at the location is COVID-19 positive, the first responders shall receive a message that the location or incident is COVID-19 possible. It's very important to note that the information that dispatch relays to the first responders is only as good as the information that is relayed to dispatch. There is no guarantee that someone is COVID-19 positive or negative. So, this order encourages all first responders to take precautions when responding to all incidents because this isn't a guarantee. This is not a sure thing. The order and revised protocol shall then be reevaluated by this council upon expiration of the Governor's March 16, 2020 order declaring a state of emergency to respond to COVID-19. This order has been discussed with county administrator, the county president, and the central dispatch director. This order, according to the dispatch director, can go into effect as soon as midnight tonight? 12:01 a.m. tonight. But this order is for your consideration, and it's consistent with guidance that's been put out by federal and state officials.
I can tell you, there's been a lot of conversation about this over the last two days. Very, very lengthy conversations.
Heated, Jim?
Yeah. It became very heated, partly because of the threats. So, anyway. I think, first of all, I'd like to say that the protocol that we put in place a couple of days ago, it is a protocol that sent the information over their CAD system into vehicles to allow them to move first and second. However, Chief felt like that was cumbersome on time and felt like I didn't help him at all on our decision that we both agreed to. So, this is what I ask our legal counsel to check into and see if we can't do more and stay within the law. Because I swear, just two weeks ago, we received an email from the state of West Virginia, I believe, saying that you can't use clear verbiage across the radio. And so, I thought the procedure we put in place, which is in place currently, was a, some way to assist our public safety responders and stay within the law. So, with further investigation, I think Andy and Norwood feels like this, part of this these times, which this is precise, this is for COVID.
Yes, sir.
Nothing else. That this would be ours under the law and assist our public safety people in responding. However, there is no guarantee. The caller may not be forthcoming with the information. And we all have to be very cautious about how we proceed or how we conduct business, period.
As Mr. President knows, there's 55 counties in the state, and each one of them are handling this differently. We have asked the state that, before this order was drafted, that it would have been beneficial or would be beneficial if the state would put, the state's been consistent about notifying first responders, but there's been no consistent guidance about how to do so. And counties across the state are doing, and across the country frankly, are all handling it different. Some put it in their CAD system, some are doing it over radio, some are using codes.
And the good thing about this county, citizens in this council has provided, I think, Mr. Wine, $300,000 to $500,000 to provide the deputies, Sheriff's Department, these computers that gives information as it's being typed into 911. So, pretty much instantaneously. And I'm just letting the public know that we've done our job. We probably went above the call duty, I'd say above probably 50 counties in the state of West Virginia.
Your statement is correct. And I don't believe no one here or even those in the field are arguing the point. It is there. The point to be argued is, you know, the time and how the technology is leveraged in the cruisers. And absolutely, you are correct. I think one point, if I may, to offer with this is this process defines asking the question. If we don't get that question, me, we meaning the professional dispatcher, if they don't get the answers, that's the end of the questioning. This isn't part of a protocol that is ongoing throughout the call, right? So, if you call in and you have a domestic issue and we offer these questions to you, if we don't get the answer, we move on through the process. It isn't something that can be revisited four, five, or six times in a call. And that's important.
And why this is gonna happen more so on the law enforcement side than the EMS side is because when somebody calls for EMS assistance, it's a medical situation.
Completely different scenario, yes, sir.
When you call for a police officer, nine times out of 10, it's a different type of emergency. Meaning, the phrase that I've used the last couple of days, my wife has finally had enough of me. She's chased me into the [inaudible] kill me in my parking lot, right? Nine times out of 10, I'm gonna say, I'm about ready to get killed. And I'm not, you know, that's, ask me a medical question is the furthest thing from my mind. So, just as long as everybody understands that.
If I could say something a second? And I don't mean to interrupt you, but the issue here is, I think that, not that I don't agree that we should do everything we can to help out the emergency personnel, but we're putting this information over a CAD system along with other vertical information that these officers need to be aware of. There should be, I would think at best minimum, this would be an effort in the police force to make sure that there is some type of protocol put in place for these officers and emergency personnel to use this CAD system because the CAD system is there for their benefit. There's more information. That's not saying that there couldn't be additional information that's on the CAD system that they need to know about anyway. So, there should be an effort to get these emergency personnel to view this CAD system and take advantage of the information that they're getting to keep themselves safety as well as the public, in my opinion.
I agree, Dan. So, you know, we can see the activity on those. So, and I hope they become utilized better than what they have in the past. The prosecuting attorney office has sent me a text, which I forwarded to each and every one of you for tomorrow. And I will forward it to Andy and Norwood. Scheduled for tomorrow on this topic, actually, it's got a conference call going with all the, from what I understand, the police departments today. And we're gonna follow up with all the county commissions tomorrow. So, Attorney General is involved. And so, see what he has to say tomorrow and see if this is the right protocol or what's going on.
What I would refer to is that Amy Wiltshire Doughty, Berkeley County prosecuting attorney, this was discussed with her yesterday, and she agrees with this order and this protocol.
Yes. I thought you said Attorney General. Is Brian okay with it? Yeah, Brian, Brian, he's okay with it, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm very much pleased with Brian. To answer your question, yes, sir. Our agency, I'm sure, is very much pleased with what you're proposing here to make it a lot more simpler. We too have the mobile data computers in our units. We fortunately have, with two people being in that unit, the capability of that second person to be able to scroll where that deputy is trying to multitask. But, so, yes, we're very much in favor of this. It's gonna make a difference. We just keep plugging at it.
You know, PPE.
PPE, okay, good question. The answer's always gonna be the same. We're, you know, we've got things in order. We have the public dropping stuff off. We just keep, we're utilizing it. So, we're just taking it one day at a time. But as we get it in, it's getting in the system. It's getting used. But I think we're gonna be okay and just continue to move forward with what we're doing. Any other questions?
No, just a statement. I mean, this will go across for all first responders, just to let everybody know.
Correct, yeah. That's police, fire, EMS, all public safety. So, that's, I think it's gonna go a long way of gaining additional confidence on their end that, you know, as you've seen with your law enforcement personnel, I think all of their exposures have been on law enforcement-only calls. So, I think everybody's going to, they're going to readily accept what you guys are doing here today. So, on behalf of our people, I'll say thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, any other comments on this?
Yeah, Doug, I believe this is an excellent argument for something that we had spoke about in the past when we were talking about vehicles. I mean, it seems to me that you keep coming up with the same support for an argument that there should be two police officers in a vehicle. We had that conversation when we were talking about vehicles and distraction and accidents and the use, you know, the amount of vehicles you'd need. And, but they can't, they don't have time to gather the proper information from the CAD system. I mean, this should probably be another in-depth conversation about why we're just having one police officer in a vehicle.
Okay, Dan, thank you. All right, need a motion to approve the order? So, move. Motion been made, seconded, any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor say aye. Anyone opposed? The motion carries. Can this go into effect tonight? All right. Any other discussions about the COVID-19? Brian, do you have anything? I guess, Mr. Davis, maybe next week we'll have every, well, we can't have it. Rotate them. But it's just one from each department. We don't have to have multiple people.
Correct. Just to let the council know, I told you a week ago, we had one crew that was in quarantine. That patient came back negative. We were able to pull that crew back out, get them back on the street. And within three days, our second crew went into quarantine. And they're currently in quarantine. We've got about another 36 hours before we get into immediate, the immediate stay. We're hoping we'll get the testing back in time to have either a positive and get them into 14 days or if not, we'll have to self, you know, do it ourselves until we get something back. But that's where we are right now. It's, we seem to be staying at that one crew quarantine mark right now. So, we're doing okay.
So, let me ask you this. We have a couple deputies that have been tested. And you've had two crews that were quarantined. One of them's been cleared, and you say the other one hasn't been cleared yet. And I'm sure the hospital may have situations going on as well. Is there, right now, everybody's quarantining at their residence? That we don't have to start trying to find a place for quarantine for people?
We, when I say we, my leadership team, we're looking out for places either to set up a facility or find a place that, you know, local motel or something to say, hey, well, we have independent ventilation systems that we can close off a floor and utilize rooms. We're working on that right now. But the current folks that we've had, they're doing it at home because, you know, there was nothing. We just went by the CDC's recommendation. They were medium-risk exposure, so that's why we put them off. But we are continuing to work that piece when we do have the positive exposure, how we move forward based on what they want to do. You know, right now, we've talked to our people a number of occasions, what they would prefer to do. And I think it's gonna be a case-by-case basis, you know? Is eventually, if that comes up, they're gonna say, hey, I'd like you guys to try to find me a place to quarantine or whatever. And we're continuing to work as we speak, so.
Sad to say, you know, I was just on the Rob and Dave Show the other day talking about Berkeley County's really done well. They had three cases in three days, which meant, what I meant by that, one case per day. Sad to say, it appears plus or minus the last two days, we've had 10.
We've jumped up.
So, I guess I, for that, everybody on the phone and in this room will probably tell me I need to learn how to keep my mouth shut once in a while. But, you know, we're doing very, very well.
We are, yeah. I've, I read the same article myself. And, you know, you, as they used to say, you race the car you took to the racetrack. At that particular moment, what you were saying was absolutely the case and true. And we all have opinions, and those change daily. So, you just keep pushing forward, doing what you're doing to take care of not only citizens of the community, but our public safety people. And collectively, we'll get through it.
Thank you, Brian.
Several weeks ago, this council authorized the purchase of 7,000 N95 masks, if we could get them. They were actually delivered this weekend. We took possession of them. First thing Monday morning, we, there were seven boxes of 1,000 each. We verified that the N95 masks were what they were proposed to be. And they were turned over to our Department of Homeland Security and the [inaudible].
over to our Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to be distributed in accordance with the needs that have been established by the Emergency Operations Center personnel. As of the close of business yesterday, we had, we have fulfilled all the needs that have been requested so far, have distributed four thousand three hundred and sixty masks, and we currently have two thousand six hundred and forty in reserve for future needs. So again, I appreciate the board's willingness, the council's willingness to purchase the masks and allow us to distribute those. We were keeping records of everything.
What was that, who asked for those and what was the distribution list?
WV.
Tell us what it looks like.
WVU Medicine East received two thousand eight hundred, Day Report Center a thousand, Fire Board five hundred, City of Martinsburg five hundred, Hospice of the Panhandle two hundred, Health Net Aeromatic Service two hundred, and Berkeley County Judicial Center sixty.
That all?
Yes, sir.
Sheriff's Department, that request any?
We have been reaching out to the sheriff's department since Monday, telling them that these masks have been, that are available, and we've not received a response.
All right, thank you. Any other conversations on the COVID nineteen?
If I could, just for a second, I'd like to thank you, Doug, and the staff for doing what you guys are doing. I'm, I may be a little more aware than most on what's going on, I don't know, but I do know that you guys are working not only your normal shift, but evenings, weekends, you know, pretty much around the clock, and I just want to make sure that at least one person is thanking you guys for what you're doing, and not always do we make the best decision the first time, but we keep at it and, and work to make the right decision and come up with the right answers. So thanks, I want to thank you guys, you know, all of the, all the county staff, as well as President Copenhagen for, for working hard on this issue and doing what, what has to be done.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? All right, I believe we've finished our business for today. Mr. Barnhart?
Mr. President, we've been recessed.
We are recessed, thank you, thank you all.